Good evening. We're going to, we have a relatively short agenda tonight, other than council committee meetings, and so we're going to start with the Employee Benefits Trust Special Council meeting. I'll call us into order. It is 5:30 on March the 16th. And so I'm going to turn this over at this point to, is it, will you do Monica or you get Monica?
Okay.
Okay, Alan?
You want to, or you want me to?
It doesn't matter.
I'll start it. You give them the numbers. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you're aware, we hired a new consultant for our employee health insurance this year. They did go out to bid. We received several responses, including United Healthcare, who is our current carrier. The good news is that, that United Healthcare reduced our rates by approximately 15%. The even better news is, is that Blue Cross Blue Shield came in at about 20% discounted from what we're paying now. Monica has worked through a worksheet to explain the, the differences in the costs in the plan. The actual functionality of the two plans are, they're the same. There's no difference between the two. The benefits are the same. The benefits are the same. The deductibles, I'm sorry, couldn't think of the name of it. The deductibles are the same. The out-of-pockets, the same. Everything is the same as what we had last year, or the current year. Monica, if you would, there, there are some little internal changes about that, but Monica, if you would.
Mayor, council, so, Blue Cross Blue Shield did come in roughly about 20% cheaper than what we're currently paying. Keep in mind that we did switch our scenario with our previous benefits consultant. Their commission was inside the premium that we were paying, whereas when we changed with Wellspring, we pay them a set amount per month. So, so there, there was already built in a little, a little like maybe about 5% difference in there already from changing that way, but we still did get some more on top of that. Blue Cross Blue Shield also guaranteed that they would not exceed, the premiums next year would not go 9.9% above the current year premium. So we'll talk about that a little bit more in detail. The dental proposal is slightly less expensive than the current plan. The vision proposal was just a little bit more expensive. That one, though, is voluntary and the employee pays 100% on that. With the savings that we got on our medical, we were able to include an additional employer-paid basic life and accidental and death and dismemberment policy for $25,000 for each employee. Also, Blue Cross Blue Shield, their HSA policy includes a preventative drug program that will allow our employees to purchase preventative drugs at a reduced or, or no cost at all. And there, we do have a list that we'll be providing to our employees so that they can look at that to determine if they want to jump off of the current EPO onto that one. I did get an email today, or yesterday, from Wellspring's, and the final numbers from Blue Cross Blue Shield actually went down a little bit more. Instead of a 3.25% discount, they gave us a three and a half. It's only like a dollar something per employee on the base, but, you know, every little bit counts. Also, I was informed by Wellspring's today that the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan that is equivalent to the EPO plan that we have through United is actually a PPO instead of an EPO. So there, there, with the EPO, there is no out-of-network coverage at all. You, you pay on it. With the PPO, there is some coverage. It is more expensive than using in-network providers, but there is some coverage. So there was that, that little difference as well. When we went through the plans and discussing, what we did this year is the EPO was the base plan and the HSA was a buy-down, and the difference went into your HSA plan. Well, this year, we changed it. The HSA is the base plan, and if you want to go with the EPO, which is now going to be a PPO plan, you'll have to pay the difference. So on an employee coverage, it's about $36 a month difference to stay with that plan. The dependent care subsidies have been removed, but all of our employees with dependent care should see a reduction in the cost, except for one category, and those are the ones that had the EPO with employee-plus-children category. That went up about $10 a month. The new benefits will replace the MD Live that we have, which is our Teladoc plan. In addition to the Teladoc and Doctors Online, the new benefits offers discounts on prescriptions, medical equipment, hearing aids, lab testing, MRI and CT scans, as well as health advocacy, which they will actually go out and search. If you have to have something done, they can help you search to find where you can get it done the cheapest. And also, if you have to have any procedures done, when the EOB's explanation of benefits start coming in, they'll help you reconcile that and start, you know, trying to negotiate on your behalf. So that's for those of us that maybe are not real experts on insurance and dealing with insurance companies and doctors and things of that nature, that could be a good benefit for our employees to help them get the lowest cost available. Employees currently on our EPO plan would have to pay the difference of the 36, 36 per month, oh, I think I already went over that, let me go down, oh, WEX. We will be changing our, our third-party administration for our COBRA, HSA and FSA administration. Currently, that was with, I think it was National, was it National Benefits Services, I believe? Which will change to WEX. I did find out also today that, that the HSA, I think we had at 225 per employee, is actually going to go down to $2. They have a special deal with Blue Cross Blue Shield, so that'll be a little bit cheaper than what we anticipated. We're recommending $1,500 employer HSA contribution. It'll be payable 350 initially on the first pay period in May, and then $50 semi-monthly for employees that'll, that are enrolled in the HSA. So that is a benefit for doing it that way. We'll go ahead and fund, you know, 350 will get you a couple, two, three doctor's appointments upfront, and then for new employees coming in, the first paycheck that they're eligible for insurance, they will also get $50 in, so that'll help them start building immediately instead of having to wait for several months until we do a quarterly input. Employees that are eligible for Medicare will now be able to opt to enroll in the Blue Cross Blue Shield plans, or they can still decline coverage. Any employee can decline coverage if they provide proof of insurance coverage elsewhere. The employees that decline are eligible 50% of the 421, 37 monthly premium, which will be a little bit less now. And that Medicare, people that are eligible for Medicare would get the equivalent, whatever our premium costs us, roughly about 420 a month. In our prior years, we had sent 1.2 million as our cap on paying out for healthcare benefits for our employees. And where this, this plan that we have presented will keep us within that target cap. What I've done is I took the calculation of our plan today and put in the new rates. We also deducted out for the 9.9 possible maximum premium increase for next year, and then included the, the HSA, and it, it's pretty close to break even, to that 1.2. It's a little, little bit of savings. And it all depends on, you know, how many people that we have that leave the, the EPO/ PPO plan and go to the HSA. One of the assumptions that we did make is that the HSA would still only be available to the, the new employees, that with the intent that we are going to go ahead and move to the HSA in our next plan year, the '22, '23 plan year. That was one of the assumptions that we made. That may not be the direction that the council wants to take, but you would have to tell us differently. That's where we, we had been going. So only the 65 people that are currently on the EPO would be the only ones that would be able to be grandfathered in to stay on the new PPO plan.
So the savings to the city is what? Actual net to the city?
It's about, when we take out all the costs, before the, the additional HSA contribution for those 65 people that are on the EPO, it's about $183,000.
And with the new HSA, what you're recommending, what is it?
With 1,500, if, if all 65 employees, it's really only saving us about 2,500 because we only did a 600 last year.
So why did you go, why did we go to 1,500?
As an incentive to get people to take the HSA plan.
And, but the incentive would be, actually the biggest incentive for them not to have to pay the difference in the price between the two plans, is that right? And why did we decide to give all the funds back instead of having the city net some of that?
Alan, you want to help me with that?
The, the reason is, is approximately, I don't know, two or three years ago, we set 1.2 million dollars as the cap, and, and it was explained at that time, anything above that, the employees paid. Anything below that will go to the HSA. And that was our understanding for the direction in this as well.
For that year, I agree with that. I necessarily think of that as an annual consideration. Is it an employee, didn't go to the doctor for four or five years, going to have seven or eight thousand bucks in the account then, right? Could potentially, if we continue at that kind of contribution?
Potentially, yes. And, and I think for most employees that are on the HSA plan, the first goal is to get your deductible covered, to have that much in your HSA plan, so to get the 3,000. And then your next goal would be to, to accumulate enough to cover your total out-of-pocket, because, I mean, most of us are, you know, can understand that if you have to have any type of surgery, you're looking, you know, $100,000 easy if you have to stay in the hospital for any amount of time, and so you're pretty much guaranteed you're going to hit your, your out-of-pocket. And it's not just, the HSA is not just for the employee, but if you have your dependents on there as well, you know, you're, then your out-of-pocket goes up to 12. So I think for most employees on the HSA going in, they want to be able to see that at some point, they're going to be able to cover their maximum out-of-pocket with their contribution, and this is just trying to get our employees there as quick as we can to make it, you know, where you don't have a medical situation that takes you out.
Well, it's my understanding, or my remembrance, which nowadays is faulting sometimes, that we were going to stop that at some point, that, the contributions. That, because typically, an HSA is the employee contributes, the HSA is pre-tax. Isn't that correct, Justin?
It is pre-tax.
It is.
And it, it comes out tax-free to the benefit of the
And it comes out tax-free as well.
Yeah, as long as it's used for qualified expenses. The, the, so the 1.2, before our costs were internal of the plans, so are we actually, is it actually costing us more by using all of the savings up to the 1.2 and then having to pay the fee?
No, because I've included all those fees in there.
Where's that in here?
If you'll look at the, the spreadsheet, this is on page five. It does the comparison. And so we have the total cost for all of our city plans, positions vacant, dental, MD Live, HSA contributions, and it goes down. So we've got the COBRA administration, the HSA administration, the FSA administration, and the costs that we're paying to Wellspring's. If you'll notice, if you look at the current and the proposed, I don't have anything in those current for the COBRA, the HSA, the FSA, and obviously Wellspring, because those were all built into the, the commission-based model, built into the premium, where on this, on the proposed, there's cost for all of those.
So the, the total cost to Wellspring's for the entire fiscal year?
Is 30,000.
Is 30,000. There's no other contractual fee?
No. The only thing that they get, which is not paid by us, is they do get commissions on the voluntary products. So, so they'll come in, just like FBS did, and they will sell Aflac products, the, the cancer policies, and, and things of those nature, and they get commissions off of those, but we don't pay those.
Got it. Thank you.
And also, keep in mind, some of these numbers are, are moving targets, because obviously, we have 168 budgeted positions, but currently, we have 130 positions on the plans, and it's because of vacancies. But I did these numbers as if we had all positions all year long. So there is some, going to be some built-in savings on top of it because of doing it that way.
Well, and you also, your projection also is assuming that everyone takes the HSA plan?
Yes, yes.
So if 40, if 40 of the 65 stay on the, on the PPO, then
Yeah, we will save $40,000 plus. So yes. But I had to do it at the maximum, because we wouldn't want to set the, the HSA contribution higher, anticipating like 20 people changing to HSA, and then 65 of them do it, then we would be upside down, so.
Anybody else?
This, this may be a Mr. Barnes question, but we budgeted, if I understood what you said, for full employment, which is 158?
168, if you please.
168, okay. But you budgeted for that, given the numbers that you did about our total expenditures, et cetera, but currently, we have 130.
On the plan, yes, on the health insurance plan.
Have we ever been at, at full employment and at full participation?
No. No, not since I've been here.
Okay, and I, I don't remember a time when we didn't have vacancies somewhere, but that, that was, if we, if we budget for, for full employment and full participation, there should, at the end of the year, be a, a savings of something to roll forward into the next year's policy, or to put back in the budget for something else.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mark? Do I hear a recommendation? Well, we, we have to, in the committee, benefits committee will have to make a recommendation, then we'll adjourn and go into city council to approve recommendations, so.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we recommend to the full council acceptance of the employee health benefit plan as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion is second. Any discussion? I would recommend next year, we not do the entire amount of money.
What, what would be the difference in, so the difference is about 70,000 from what we're offering to them right now to, to what we're proposing? And then the other reason you get to the 1.2, so I'm confused on the 1.2 as part of this budgetary discussion, because you've also built into a future-year cost.
Yes, I did.
So what are we approving tonight, then? What is the cost of what we're approving tonight?
Roughly about 1,120, a little less than that, would be your maximum damage for the year.
Okay. And then
Because I have about 80,000 built in for that next year's possible increase. And then there, there is some savings, I mean, it's not much, but.
Monica, get my beat, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say, and then if you reduce to the 135 employees right now, what is that number then, at this point?
Well, you have to include the people that also, also opt-out. So there's, there are 13 current vacant positions, and so that cost on those vacant positions is about $65,000.
So that would come off of the 1-1 as well?
Yes.
But you have the opt-outs, and we pay a portion of theirs, or if they're in care, all of it.
And so I, I included the opt-out in the cost, the total cost of the insurance.
As a funded cost, or as, that you're assuming that they're not going to be paid for in here?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that they're going to stay opted-out.
Okay, so you assume they're staying opt, so there's no additional savings there?
Well, there is additional savings in the sense that what we pay them is less because our premiums are less. So yes, there is still a savings for those people that opt-out. It's just, I can tell you what it is. If you'll look on that, the employees opting out, it was costing us about 97,000 at the current rates. We're dropping it to the new rates, will cost us about 75,000 for those employees. There is about a $21,000 worth of savings, annual savings, for the, even the people that opted-out, and we're just paying them the, the funds, so that's in there as well. But yes, for the 13 positions that are currently vacant, that's additional 65,000 that, that we wouldn't be paying out.
Okay. But they could be filled between now and
That's right.
The start of the next fiscal year.
That's right.
So the, so this would, would then show the healthcare costs will be 1,120
Roughly, yes.
For the, for the next fiscal year. And that's what, that's what we're discussing. Okay.
Well, this is really plan year, keep that in mind, because this one runs May to
Calendar year. Oh, no, it's, it's
It's May to, May to April.
Yeah, it runs May to April.
Okay. So this would take effect in this fiscal year, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Four months. Five months, I guess. May, June, July, September, August, September. Anybody else? Proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Okay, we're going to, it is 5:51. I'm going to adjourn the Employee Benefits Trust meeting and call to order a special council meeting to consider approval of employee benefits for '21, '22. Is that our motion? So move.
Second.
Mark makes the motion, and Ricky, you, you're the one? This thing right here is kind of... Any discussion? Proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Okay, we're going to adjourn the cit, special city council meeting at 5:52. And doing so, we'll now call in a session, the city committee, city council committee meetings at 5:52, and first committee is Mr. McClinton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a quorum of finance committee here, and we have one item on the agenda, and that is to discuss the TERS. Just as a gentle reminder, this does involve some sensitive information, so just ask everybody be cognizant of what you say here tonight. This is an open meeting. Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, we, we as staff were directed to reach out to Pettit Group to discuss the creation, or let me rephrase that, to the, the inclusion of Project Blue, Christie Plaza, Lockhart, and properties in those areas, to include those possibly, or to consider possibly including those into a, a TERS or a TIF. We had a conversation with Natalie Moore and David Pettit, who are both here tonight to discuss this. It was suggested, and, and through a, an extensive conversation, it was actually, our recommendation tonight is not to establish an, an additional TERS, but to create a TERS 1C. There are a couple of reasons for that, and Natalie will get into that in a little bit, but, but the primary reason is, is what I'm, what we're calling TERS 1C is a very small area, and there's not a significant, a huge number of, of projects in that area, or potential projects in that area. And so it may be beneficial to have that as, as an addition to our current TERS, so that they can create some, some synergy between the two, and, and A, maybe help 1C get their projects done a little quicker, and B, maybe get all the other projects in, in 1A, or, yeah, 1A, well, 1, 1A and 1B, get additional funding for those eventually. Natalie, at this point, or David, whichever one, I'm going to turn it over to you guys, and, and Mr. Mayor, staff has an additional recommendation at the end.
Can I remove my mask?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Barnes, for having us here today. We do have a presentation that we'd like to go over with you, and since I do see some new members of council that I don't believe have had the pleasure of presenting in front of before. My name is Natalie Moore, I'm with David Pettit, Economic Development, out of Fort Worth. We've had the pleasure of working with Stevenville since 2019, so we're happy to be here with you in person. Next slide, please. I just wanted to give a brief history of, of TERS number one. It was created by ordinance on April 25th, 2019, and then in July of 2019, the TERS boundary was expanded, again, by ordinance, to include what we're calling TERS number 1A. That was an area consisting of approximately 8.51 acres along North Harbin Road, or Drive, from Fry Street to Washington Street. And I, I want to go back one bullet. On TERS number one, that was really a project-driven TERS. That was what kind of brought us down here to Stevenville to talk to you guys about the concept of tax increment financing. And then once we kind of got more into what the tool can be used for, that was when the conversation kind of evolved to discuss potentially using some of that increment to improve Harbin Road. And then you just couldn't get enough of us. On February 4th of 2020, we came back and further expanded the TERS to create TERS 1B. So again, even though each zone is designated kind of a different name, this is one TERS that just has been expanded two times. The reason that we designate different names, distinguishing TERS 1A, TERS 1B, is because of the different base years that some of them may have. So TERS 1 and, TERS 1A were both created in 2019. What that means is that the base year value of which the increment is measured against is the value as of 20, January 1st, 2019. However, since TERS 1B was created in 2020, that base year value is as of January 1, 2020. For the purposes of this, this discussion, if we were to create TERS 1C, since it's 2021, that would have a distinctive 2021 base year value. Next slide, please. So you can see here in red on, on the west side, is that, again, that project, retail-driven project, that was why this conversation was initiated, TERS 1. And then you can see in the light blue along Harbin, that was TERS 1A, and then TERS 1B, you can see it goes around TERS 1A, all the way down, you know, it's over 200 you can see it goes around TERS one A, um, all the way down, um, you know, it's over two hundred acres. So this is what TERS one looks like right now. Next slide, please. So the terms of the TERS, and when I'm talking about the TERS, I do talk about one, one A and one B, it's a twenty-five-year term. So each time that we expanded it, we did not extend the term of the TERS, we were just adding boundaries within that same twenty-five-year term. And the city of Stevenville is contributing a hundred percent of its real property increment and a hundred percent of the sales tax increment within the boundaries of all three, TERS one, one A, and one B. Stevenville Economic Development Authority, SEDA, is contributing a hundred percent of its sales increment within the original boundaries, that's TERS, um, number one only. In accordance with an inter-local agreement with the city of Stevenville that was approved by SEDA on May third, twenty nineteen, and the city council on May seventh, twenty nineteen. So this is a city-initiated TERS, anytime that another taxing entity wants to participate in it, and that's up for negotiation, they do not always have to match the terms of your participation, as you can see here. And they're, they're only participating in portions of it, that is their right. And if for TERS one C, that is to be negotiated as well, that is not set in stone. Next slide, please. So the highlighted, uh, parcels here in yellow that you can see are what we're, um, potentially looking at, expanding the TERS to include for TERS one C. This is again, not set in stone, this is something that's to be discussed, um, among city staff, but this was provided to us by the city as the area of interest. There is a portion on the northern portion of these boundaries that already does have developer interest, and I think that's, um, what's really generating us being here today. You can see on the right, the table, it's a little bit hard to see, but there is already retail programmed for that site, consists of a quick-service retail, a restaurant, and I think a convenience store. Next slide, please. So what would it look like, uh, you know, what, what are our services that we would provide? The steps that we would work with you guys to do to create or amend a TERS? So when the, when you're just trying to determine, you know, is it easier to amend a TERS? Is it, is a lot more, um, labor, you know, to do, create a new TERS? Chapter three eleven, which is the statute that governs tax increment financing, it outlines those procedures. The steps are actually the same to create or amend a TERS. You have to do a creation ordinance, um, and to create a TERS, and you also have to do an amendment to the creation ordinance to amend a TERS. So that step is the same, you would still be drafting an ordinance, there's still a TERS project and financing plan, albeit, um, it would be an amended project and financing plan. The creation ordinance would establish five key elements, the boundary, so the, those parcels that were outlined on that TERS one C, we would have to make sure to, obviously clearly distinguish which parcels would be included in the expanded boundary. The term, you could say, you know, you want to include the, um, expand the term or include it just in the term that's already in existence. The TERS board, now that is something that would not have, um, distinct, different TERS boards for different regions of the TERS, since it is just one TERS, it would still be one TERS board governing all of the expanded areas. The city participation, and then again, that preliminary project and financing plan. Any additional taxing entities that would want to participate would need to do so by separate inter-local agreement, just like you've already done with SEDA for TERS one, TERS one, period. After the creation or amendment, the final amended project and financing plan, or the, you know, final project and financing plan would be approved by the board and then city council by separate ordinance. And next slide, I will turn it over to the man, the myth, the legend, David Pettit himself, to discuss, uh, what, what are some of the considerations that you should take into account when deciding whether to create or amend?
Mayor and council and Alan, um, thank you so much for, um, having us here today. We should just let her talk, you don't wanna hear me.
I would agree with that.
So, uh, I'm a legend in my own mind. But, uh, we had a very productive conversation on the phone with staff, and Natalie mentioned the steps to create or amend are the same. So if we really think about it, increment from one area of, of the same TIF can be used for projects anywhere in the zone. So that's one of the benefits that we kind of talked through. And so the opportunity for city-led improvement initiatives. One of the things that we dug through was, you also remember there was a bond that was issued for Harbin Road, and so all that money for one A, or one, one A and one B was pledged for that. If there was any, uh, potential one C, that would be kind of silent, okay? So it wouldn't go towards that, so it could be, as Natalie put in, a first in, first out, or what we call an eat what you kill. If you produce increment, that comes back to you. So you're not getting convoluted in that, the entire boundary. You have a first going in to pay off your bonds. Any potential new development that would occur in this area would be kind of a standalone. I initially went into this saying, it really kind of makes sense to kind of do a separate TIF, it's not to co-mingle, but it's very clean, um, and, and as Natalie said, there are different bases and participation rates for the boundaries and, which is allowed, so, but we've, we've kept that all the same, except for SEDA is participating just on TERS one, they're not participating on TERS one A or one B. And so as we kind of worked through one C, Natalie did mention the board. And the, the way the, the statute's written is each, um, ad valorem taxing jurisdiction, uh, I think because SEDA was contributing their sales tax, um, it's up to the city council. And so they're just, uh, the TIF board is a recommended body to the city council, which has ultimate final authority. So I think that, um, I don't know, how do we move forward? Can you go to the next slide, please?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, um, so, uh, we really, uh, it, it was, it was eye-opening as we kind of had this conversation. And there's a lot of positives for doing, um, an extension of the existing TIF and accelerating some projects and using some benefits from those projects to seed other projects. So with that, if, if y'all would like to move forward, we believe between the two of us that we can come back to you with a creation ordinance and a public hearing and approval on, by May, um, April twentieth, uh, twenty twenty-one. Of course, uh, along that way, we would talk about participation, you know, what we're paying for, those type of things, and work those out, and those would be presented in that, um, creation ordinance, public hearing and approval. And then if there was going to be SEDA, uh, participation, this is, you're in a local agreement, if they want to participate as well. The good thing is, I remember having to write that from scratch, um, and working with, uh, SEDA's attorney, Jeff Moore, and we, we had a good time kind of putting that together. So we have a template that's kind of been established, and the TIF board can approve the amended project and financing plan, you know, in that May-June timeframe, and we can also have final approval of that final project and financing plan by that May-June timeframe. So, um, happy to answer any questions that y'all might have. We, like I said, we had a very productive conversation, and I think Alan said, this would be really great if you brought this back to the council. Because at the time, when I was first, uh, as I mentioned, I said, no, we need to do a separate TIF, it's not to co-mingle it, but it, it, it works out very well, so, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Questions?
I do, so David, just refresh me. We do not have to assign a hundred percent of the increment back to the TERS, is that correct?
No, it, it, zero to a hundred percent. So in TERS one, one A and one B, you assigned a hundred percent.
Right.
So any additions, um, that each have their own separate accounting, um, that it goes along with that, so it has its own base and its own participation. So with one C, you decided to participate at sixty percent, and I'm just throwing out a hypothetical, then it'd be sixty percent of that increment would go into that one C bucket. And so we have buckets for each one of those. But if you decide you had an overage from another one of those, one, one A or one B, that could, um, help self-fund, or front-end load some of the projects in one C. And vice versa, if you're overperforming in one C, that could help some of your other projects. So, um, you do not have to do a hundred percent. That's a, that's a straight answer to your question.
So in terms of flexibility of the funds that might be created within this one C, there's more flexibility not to assign a hundred percent of the increment to the?
Well, um, there's two schools of thought on that. One, a hundred percent gets you to reaching whatever dollar amount quicker, but you also still have to pay for city services. And so, um, depending, and those are some of the things that we would present to you, this is what a hundred percent would produce over that time period. We'd probably look at that hundred percent, or that twenty-five-year term, kind of mirroring that term, seeing we just did it, so it really, we're looking at a twenty-three-year term, Natalie. So we would look at that, and then we would just scale back that participation rate. And so basically, typically, we do a hundred percent, seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five percent. And how much increment from that one C it would take to get to that dollar amount. To date, I don't think, Alan, we've been told what that dollar amount that we're trying to achieve is. That's correct. But we would work that out through the process.
Okay.
Anybody else?
So once that, once that dollar amount is met by leaving it in the other TERS districts, then is there obligation to pay those, whatever is outstanding at that point before it becomes available to the general fund, or?
So, um, you would want to pay off, and, and it depends on how the development agreement is written. Right now, there is one agreement with the TIF, from the TIF board, and that is pledging all the money from one, one, one A and one B to pay back the bonds that you issued under certificates of obligation. So C is not encumbered by that. So it would be, you know, at your discretion, whether you wanted C, once they've met those obligations, to continue to pay off those bonds that were issued for Harbin Road, or if you'd want to, um, close it. Because once those obligations have been met, you could close that one C, um, portion of the TIF. So, uh, it, it's really at your, it's your pleasure, you know, once you get further down the road, and you kind of see what that increment is.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Chair? Has a question?
Yes, sir.
Or if you had another project or expenditure that you could, that you wanted to add on for one C, you could certainly do so.
Absolutely, so that, the, any addition.
It doesn't have to go back to paying off the bonds, it could go into project development.
Correct, and, and that's what I was, I was trying to articulate, is that the, the one C is kind of a standalone. The one and one A and one B are all going to pay back the bond. It, it says, we pulled up the resolution today, it says a hundred percent of that increment is going to pay off that bond.
Yeah.
One C is kind of a standalone.
The beautiful thing about it is, you know, I'm a nerd like that, I can get beautiful.
Do you want to come up to the microphone?
The increment from one C, depending on how you draw the boundaries, if, we always say that it, it makes a lot of sense to capture anything that you see that is imminent, so any increment that is coming online, you can capture it. And any, he does, he's correct in saying that TERS one C would be standalone in, in the fact that it's sheltered from having to pay back those bonds. But any increment generated within one C could be spent on projects anywhere within the TERS. So within TERS number one, one A or one B. So if you had other city projects that you may have in other boundaries, you could use the TERS one C increment anywhere within the TERS, not just necessarily within TERS one C.
Okay. Do each of those expenditures require amendments then to the financing, the finance plan that, that goes along with creation?
No, as long as it's under the menu of eligible project costs that we have listed, which are just really broad categories, like water, sanitary sewer. So as long as they, as long as the projects fall within the boundaries of any of the TERS expansions that we've done, and the increment goes into the TERS fund, then it can be expended anywhere within the TERS boundaries.
And the increment can just, uh, grow until you're ready?
Oh, of course, yeah, it's not obligated to be spent. It goes, um, before the TERS board and then city council, and you have the discretion to say, is this a project that we want to support or not? And that's a, a, a great point, because the TERS is not by right. Sometimes people think, oh, my property's within the TERS, so then I get TERS money. That's not the case at all, you have to prove that your project, um, merits TERS participation.
Okay, I just want to add to that, because what, what I think we're talking about is with the TERS is casting a wide net, and if in one C you decided to do a hundred percent, but seventy-five percent going to that project, and twenty-five percent going to projects that are somewhere in one, one A or one B, you can certainly do that. So that's to answer your question, is it gives you the ultimate flexibility, and all those decisions are made by the TERS board and ultimately by the city council.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
So make sure I understand, with the, with TERS, with the TERS one, the, with the appraisals going up, it's, I'm assuming, and then, and I think with what's happening, COVID bent, pent up expenses, money to spend, that our revenue will be higher in TERS one than what we anticipated when we said to create that, uh, bond, borrow the money for that bond. So if that goes up another a hundred thousand a year, or fifty thousand a year, or whatever, that money does not have to be spent in one, it can be spent in one C if we needed to, or one B. So that's, and, and then in addition to that, TERS one is, so it doesn't obligate any, all the funds from that area to, we can go somewhere else with it, but it still has to stay within the, the TIF area, the TERS area.
Correct, and, and so, I mean, the way the, the, the resolution is, is, is written is that, you know, all revenue that's being generated, so they want to pay that off. The intent was, we want to pay that off as fast as possible. So if we had low projections, they could have been higher. So we don't really have that flexibility in one, um, in one A and one B, until the, the, the bond's paid off, or until the term ends, we have that flexibility in one C.
One C, you have the flexibility.
Yeah, because the way we wrote it was all, and, and that's what the bond market wanted to see, was it had belts and suspenders, it had your full faith and credit behind the bond, but then you had a repayment schedule, so there's really no risk, so there's two kind of pillars.
So on TERS one then, all the funds that generate, any increased funds goes back to pay off that particular note?
First.
First note.
So it's first in, first out, under one A, B, and C. I mean, one, one A and B, not C.
Okay, but that doesn't obligate C to do that?
Correct, correct.
So we could use C to pay one if we wanted to?
Correct.
But the interest rate is what, what was the interest rate, like, one?
One nine.
Well, not, one nine percent.
That's the, that's the beauty of it.
That's your free money.
And if I could take you back to the, to the discussion, was Harbin Road was the main driver of that. So why wouldn't we pledge all the revenue to pay off that CO obligation? So that was the intent.
One B and one, one A and one B change?
So, so it was one A and B.
So all, all the revenue then goes to pay that note first?
Correct.
What the collections are.
Correct, correct, and so we hope they're higher, so it'll pay it off quicker.
Well, but the interest rate's gonna be at what, in six months? Who knows, it could be?
Treasuries are going up.
Yeah, you're right.
Ten-year treasuries.
It could be four percent.
Yeah.
So that's why it would have been nice to repay the, or sell, keep the money and do something else with it.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I mean, I think that looking at all of it, um, and, and I was absolutely, sometimes your knee-jerk reaction is not always your, the, the right answer, but this gives you the most flexibility going forward, and I think it'll give you a lot of options.
It was pretty scary to sign that note that night.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. But, but it looks like that everything's being, you know, executed according to plan, and that we cast a, you know, wide net. And once again, like I said, you're not obligated at a hundred percent. You might choose to do that to accelerate those payments, to freeze that money up for something else. But once again, one point nine percent money is kind of hard to beat.
Any other questions?
So the, just so the, so the one C, once, once whatever project and debt obligation is assumed is paid off, what happens with one C's incremental revenue?
So that would be, um, the documents that we would write would not say that it would be terminated. So it's basically, there's two things that, you know, kind of drive it. The overall TIF, if you've met the overall financial obligation, um, and then also the term. So really, it's up to the, um, TIF board and to the city council about whether you want to continue to take that money and put it into the overall TIF number one, one A, B, and C, even though C's paid off, and continue to use that for projects, or to stop it. So that's a decision that you make once you, that, that obligation has been paid off. So you're, you're not really tying your hands at the time of creation of, or amendment of one C, that once this, I mean, we can, we certainly could, if you wanted to, say that once this is paid off, that one C no longer exists. But I think what would probably give you the best option going forward is, if that obligation's paid off, that money just goes into one C, so you have that entire net to cover, to fund projects. Or the TIF board and city council decide, no, we're comfortable, we want that money to come back to the general fund. So that's, that's the flexibility you have with doing that. So really, it's the term that's driving everything in those obligations. And so right now, we have one obligation, and that's to pay off Harbin Road. C will have its obligation to pay it off. The decision what to do if you hit that early. The decision what to do if you hit that early is really just another amendment.
Well, isn't it true then, I'm sorry, isn't it true then to that, in a sense, since it's full faith and credit of the city, we're guaranteeing that those can get paid off? And you're saying go back to general fund and everything we're paying for out of this bond is in general fund expenses anyway. So it is like going back to general fund, isn't it?
Correct. It, it, it's going back without changing your INS.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but, so basically, it's, it's self-funded, it's through your certificate of obligation, it's the one point nine. So, yes, um, but I think that, um, what I'm just trying to avoid from, uh, is we don't like to put TIFs in a place to where it says, okay, one C, because anything can be amended in the future, that, you know, as soon as one C's obligation's been met, that it terminates. Um, we can certainly do that if that's the choice of the, of the City Council. But I think it gives you more options, particularly that you have this one point nine percent money. And so really, those are all options that we would present as part of the amendment.
So part of the discussion then would be to, to possibly consider a cap that would allow flexibility above that cap?
Correct.
And then I guess another thing would be to, so are these, is it typical for TIFs or TERS to, identify or structure the note repayment for the length or term of the bond?
Um, typically, and, and, and we get into this in some of our initial TIF discussions, TIFs need to be in a fifteen, twenty, twenty-five-year period so they can generate enough increment so you can have money to pay that off. And so I think as we structured our bonds when we worked, was it, was it Nick Bulash that was doing your bonds? That we looked at the year, the, the, we had two years of capitalized interest. So that basically that was borrowed at one point nine percent. So we didn't have, there was not going to be any money put out by the city is from the full faith and credit. It was going to be the TIF increment that was going to be making those payments. And so, um, what we try to do is, my crystal ball doesn't go very far. It goes about five, ten, you know, and with COVID, you know, everything's out. And we get into everything that people talk about, the new normal. So what we like to do is leave a little bit of flexibility and at any time you've met those obligations. And so what we would do is we would include project cost that would be equivalent to what is needed in one C. Once you've met that, at that time, if there's more bandwidth within those project costs, you have the ability to spend it or at that time you can amend it and increase those costs. So you have all options at your, you know, disposal as you kind of go forward. But you can also say, you know, in writing, as soon as one C's paid off, one C ends and, you know, the, the others just go towards, you know, the obligations of the certificate of obligation. So it's really just the, it's the term that really drives the overall TIF. And all along the way, and Natalie and I kind of make a living on amending these TIFs because once again, our crystal balls never get, you know, we think five years, ten years. So y'all might have another need in that ten to twenty-five-year period that we haven't thought about.
We will.
So I hope that answers your question. But I think what it does is, um, I'm just telling you from my, you know, years of experience is that this is giving you a lot of flexibility and ultimately, it's going to be City Council that makes the decision.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Brandon, you got anything?
No, all sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Monica, I would just ask, um, and they've got a cost here to develop thirty-seven five. Are we good to go on that? All right. Well, from the committee, we need a recommendation to send along to the council, one way or the other.
I'd make a recommendation to form TERS one C, the cost thirty-seven five.
I've got a motion by Justin, second by Brandon.
TERS one C, it also goes on to say the cost developers to be the same. Did I, did I phrase that right? Am I phrasing this right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You wanted to, you wanted to do the TERS one C at a cost of thirty-seven five.
Yeah.
Is that what you got?
Yes, sir.
And Brandon, you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so a motion by Justin, second by Brandon, to move along to the full counsel of the creation or amendment to create TERS one C at thirty-seven, five hundred. Any further discussion? Hearing no, we'll see vote, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So that will move to the council with a recommend, a positive recommendation to create TERS one C. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Finance Committee meeting for this evening.
Thank you, sir. So we'll go on to this point to Ms. Robinson and Parks and Leisure Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Parks and Leisure Services Committee has one item to discuss tonight and that is the replacement of three pieces of aged equipment, mowing equipment. Um, I believe Kelly has a little presentation to go over on that. Thank you, Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Mr. Barnes. Um, staff is recommending tonight to purchase three replacement mowers of, because we have three, um, existing mowers which are out of commission right now. So these mowers that we're recommending to purchase tonight are replacement mowers to keep up with the maintenance, the existing, the existing maintenance of the, uh, two hundred and fifty-plus acres of facilities and grounds that parks take care of, um, in the community. Currently, I wanted to provide with you so you know, those mowers that are in the shop that are really out of commission, they're going to cost twenty-four thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and three cents to repair. Quite a hefty repair bill for, you know, equipment that's fifteen-plus years old. Um, ours technically have a lifespan of five to seven years based on their, their usage. So what I want to present tonight is a couple of financial, finance options to purchase these mowers. Um, one of those is a five-year, um, finance plan. Um, and one reason we're looking at this five-year finance plan is we want to get into a, a replacement program per se. So we're looking at, you know, like you do police vehicles or, you know, public works vehicles. So we want to get into that, um, plan moving forward with mowers and then other pieces of equipment in, in parks as we move forward, um, in the upcoming years. Um, but for this year, uh, for the first payment for this five-year plan that we're proposing, it's an annual fee of twenty thousand, two hundred and seven dollars, thirty-three cents, uh, plus a five hundred dollars initiation fee, a setup fee. So that's a three thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars savings of repairs. So with that purchase, um, that would be that twenty thousand dollars this first year and then upcoming for the next four years, which would provide us the equipment that we need. At the end of those five years, we would have and own those, um, mowers, which would move forward with keeping up with the maintenance, but also it would be time to look at, um, replacing the current, uh, equipment that we have now, which we have two, um, twenty-twenty mowers and we actually have one two thousand and twelve. That is, excuse me, two thou, what was that number? Thank you, two thousand and fourteen. That's actually on its last leg and I'd almost got a commission, but we're hopefully going to get through this year. Um, so another proposal that I wanted to share with you tonight is a lease option. And to, oh, if I may back up, I apologize. Um, so with that five-year plan, um, the total cost of expense included interest, uh, would be one hundred and one thousand, thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, so I also presented with you tonight a lease option program, which I won't go through all those numbers, but to participate in the lease option program, you're going to spend a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, fifty-four, a hundred and twelve, fifty-four dollars and eighty cents. So you're a little bit higher on that end with the lease program. Um, fortunately with the Toro, we would be spending more out annually when we pay a dollar to purchase that for the conditional sales contract. But the other mowers we're proposing is a thirty-two percent, um, interest tacked on to the total fees. So lease option is not really the great, uh, direction that we wish to propose tonight. So I think the, uh, financial five-year plan and then moving forward and planning the, um, replacement option after that from this year. Um, so tonight, staff is recommending to move forward with purchasing, uh, the three mowers, um, that park maintenance staff has recommended for the five-year plan at the initial fee of the twenty thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and thirty-three cents plus the five hundred dollars, um, initial fee. And I have Rick Price, Superintendent Parks, uh, here tonight if there's any questions pertaining to the equipment itself, because I don't know quite that information or any other operation questions that we cannot answer for you tonight.
Great.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the committee? Mr. Nix?
Kelly, these, these mowers that we're talking about, what's, what's the warranty on them?
Um, yes, the, uh, Toro has a two-year warranty and then the Skaggs have a two-year warranty plus a three-year deck and cast spindles warranty.
Okay. And, and these are commercial grade?
They are commercial grade, yes.
And does our use have any impact on the warranty or service from the dealer, et cetera?
I'm sorry, can you?
Does, I know they're commercial use, but does our use specifically, because we do much more than the average yard service would do, does that have any impact on the warranty or service that's performed by the dealers on these?
No, sir, they're, it's a commercial warranty and that's, that's exactly what we are listed under as, as a commercial entity. So therefore it is a two-year.
Okay.
With, with the deck being a three and the spindles being a three.
Okay.
That's on the Skaggs though, not on the Toro. Toro is just a two-year.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Hasky?
So on the lease options, the number, so the Toro, that's the cost of the Toro into those two scenarios. And then below that is the Skagg costs. Is that, am I reading that right?
Correct.
And what, uh, so it says there are two different, oh, two different options for the Toro.
Correct.
Same option for the others.
Correct. The Skag had that thirty-two percent interest at the end of the, the financing for, um, the lease option.
Is this the last, is this first, when's the last time we made a purchase like this?
Two thousand and six.
Really?
And that's, that's the mower we are replacing. That is the, the, the two large mowers we have were both originally purchased in two thousand and six.
And our most recent was that they bought two last year mowers. And that's the existing working mowers that we have right now.
If you were to rate these as critical, I'm, I'm assuming these are some of the more critical pieces of equipment, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Mower seasons has begun and, yeah.
Was this a part of the budget or capital project plan at all?
This was not, uh, for, for this year. Now, they, they, they did request in the budget to replace some of these mowers initially, but it was not included in the budget. Um, I think these were included in, in future year purchases, but, uh, it got accelerated because of the hefty price tag on repair.
Mr. Hasky?
What's the current budget of repair and maintenance costs? So are there other pieces of equipment that are fifteen-plus years old?
Not that old. These are the two oldest pieces of equipment that we have. There are two largest.
So the, the machinery maintenance, uh, that we had was five thousand, fifty dollars in this year's budget.
Is that a pretty typical number?
We, we had, we actually had more budgeted o, over in past years, but it hadn't been, been utilized. So over the years, since I've been here, we've reduced that amount to a certain degree, but it, it started to creep back up again as far as what we're spending.
I mean, we've got it, we're going to have to do something. I just would ask that, that a capital improvement project plan be put together for this. These are, this is, this is how we get in trouble in other areas of the city too, just it becomes exasperating.
Mr. Hasky, the problem that has taken place in the Parks and Recreation Department in the, in the past couple of years is the previous administration did let us know that there was, uh, a mower issue. However, their recommended solutions were over a quarter of a million dollars. Uh, the other, uh, solutions, uh, were discussed and they were, uh, rigidly set that they needed the hundred and forty thousand dollar mower, the, the single mower for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, as well as the other, uh, mowers at a much higher price than, than what these are. What this recommendation is, is a replacement of the equipment that we currently have, that we have had, that we have in fact used successfully for the last fifteen years.
Is there money in reserves to pay for this?
There is. And, and this is something that shortly after I got here and, and looked at the fixed assets and the, the, uh, the age of the equipment, um, had actually spoken with the, uh, previous park superintendent about, you know, we need to get on either some kind of lease program or some kind of purchase plan program because, you know, you don't typically see, uh, these kind of mowers lasting this kind of timeframe without having, you know, huge, huge repair bills every year. Um, it's just the, the plans that have been brought up were not things that, that the administration, uh, could get behind that we could feel comfortable taking to, to council for approval. Um, when, uh, Ms. Wethippa, Cameron Ford, uh, her and Rick were really hard to come up with something that, uh, we thought was presentable. And, and what you'll see is in the future years, probably in two or three years, we'll bring another one back to replace some of these older mowers and we'll start getting into a cycle like with the police cars.
I mean, is it possible to repair one or two of them and maybe just buy one?
I think what you're going to find if we do that, then we'll spend probably more, uh, in next year than, than what in repair bills. I mean, there's no guarantee. I don't have a, a crystal ball. But my fear is, is that if we buy one and repair, spend the money to repair the other two and next year we're going to be spending as much money in repair bills than we would have in financing and we have, uh, new equipment that's under warranty.
If I may, and just replacing, say, one mower, um, we only have two mowers. We have over two hundred and fifty-plus acres to take care of. We would not be able to keep up and maintain the grounds. Uh, they'd be on mowers twenty-four, seven and everything else would fall to the waste. Buildings would be neglected, other maintenance would be neglected.
I mean, if you got one, let's say you got one repaired and we bought two new ones and then put on schedule for next year, became part of the budget on an annual basis.
We need three mowers. So if the goal is that those best things, we need three mowers so that we can do the financial plan, whichever fits the budget well, or if we do purchase two and then we repair one. But again, not sure the lifeline of those, we get it out in three weeks and it's out of commission and now it's twice the amount to repair it. And it's going to be out of commission for a certain amount of time to manage that. So those are concerns that we're going to run into if we're still trying to utilize this outdated, older equipment that is not functioning and, and providing us a huge expense for repairs.
Rick, do you have information on how much downtime we had on those mowers this last season? I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the floor.
No, that's all right. That's all right. Um, part of the problem we had with the, with the downtime was that, uh, they have to go out to Dallas to be repaired. And each time we do that, we incur a cost. Um, diagnosis or diagnostics of a mower to be repaired cost us five hundred dollars just to get that diagnostics done. We were down on an average of probably six months between the two mowers that we currently have, the two larger mowers. With, with one being there about two months, the other there being about four months. Part of the problem we ran into was that the mower that is needing replacement, came back with an estimate for repair of over fifteen thousand dollars. In addition to that, we've spent over eight thousand dollars just on parts and repairs, uh, for those two mowers that are currently, I guess you'd call ailing. One is out of commission. That's the one that they want to charge fifteen thousand dollars to repair. There's only one place to take it, that is in Dallas. That's, uh, professional turf products. The other is, um, I guess what they would call terminal. They expect it to be out of commission at some point in time. They couldn't give me a timeframe, but it, they said it could be from one day to six months. So, um, those are our two big mowers. Those are our ten-foot deck mowers. And that is what we do most of the large areas with. These ten-foot deck mowers, um, also have, uh, the ability to, uh, have three different mowing selections. You can mow off the center deck, which is a fifty-four inch deck. You can put down one wing, which adds another thirty-seven inches. Or you can go ahead and mow at the total foot, uh, the total ten-foot deck width. They're relatively quick, they're powerful, so the taller grass, you know, we get in- They're relatively quick, they're powerful, so the taller grass, you know, we get into rainy season, our grass, on occasions, we can't get to because it's too wet, it lets up the park, so we need bigger machines to be able to take care of that.
So, so the Toro would be not one I would recommend repairing, but the other two are beyond repair or?
One of those, the flex, the frame is completely cracked in it, it's unsafe. And the other one is one that we have actually taken on from the cemetery that we can't even figure out when it was purchased. It's been around a while.
Is it, is not one of these three?
It's one of those three.
Oh, okay.
What is the advantage, just so I know, the finance to purchase option versus just a outright buy, aside from just spreading the cost down?
That is true. It just spreads the cost out so that we don't hit this year's budget, kind of like we do with the, the police cars. We're not hitting any specific budget, you know, and what else we, and, and the interest, what was it? I'm sorry, my computer died.
Two. Interest for the five-year finance plan is 2.997. So for the five years, it's $8,417.67. So it's fairly minimal. And I, and I didn't propose, but I just can give you the number if you'd like, because we were, Ms. Harris and I were talking about the, the finance option is the better plan so the, the budget is not hit detrimental in the middle of the fiscal year. But for off to purchase outright off three pieces of equipment, it's $91,618.98. So that's if you were to go directly, but I know that's not the direction we were wanting to present because of the big hit that it would impact the budget.
Mr. Security. Is there a legal district attorney?
Answer my questions.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's been many moons, but I used to manage a long business. And one of the things I've found is when you don't do it like you're recommending, what ends up happening is you don't use your older machines, it's going to break down. So what happens is you double time your newer machines and it just gets to be four rounds faster. And so that, you know, it didn't save me a whole lot of money doing it that way, because then you're having more time or overtime, et cetera. When you, if you run all three of them, there's other costs associated with where I'm being down besides just the cost of repair.
Mark?
More than nine hours.
Okay. Mr. Duro.
I had just a question. If I remember correctly, last year, we were talking, we were talking a bit and we had a little presentation and we were talking a bit about, we had a contract with a private company for mowing. Fire station. Do we still have that?
Yes. Well, we, yes.
Will we still have that in the future, even if we get three new machines?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Can you add a little bit to what the contract? Forgive me, I still learn, so I know we have the contracts, but I don't know what they cover, but Mr. Price, can you?
Yes, the contracts that we have currently are for outlying areas within the city that are city responsibility for cleaning, you know, vacant lots and things such as that. They also take care of the Bosque River Trail and they take care of the medians. With the Green Ribbon Project, we are required for those medians to take on the responsibility of having a contractor take care of those. That was part of the agreement with them. So those are the areas that they take care of at this point.
That includes the fire station, though?
That is a separate contract that the, it's not the same company, I do not believe.
What is that contract?
I wish I had my computer, it was still running. I, I want to say it's about $300 a month, if I remember correctly.
12 months a year.
Yeah. And I know that they, they talked that if, and I, I'm, I'm sorry, I may be misquoting this, I always introduce here, but they, they found that if they just did it a couple times a year, that the, the cost, because there was so much work just doing it a couple times, that it was just actually cheaper for them to, to pay it monthly with what the contractor was charging them. So I'm sorry, I don't have that right.
Would y'all have the ability to take on that responsibility?
Of the?
The fire station?
Fire station?
It's about, it's like a fourth of an acre or something.
They used to do it. I, I don't see that that would add tons to our, our.
Pay for it.
Payload right now.
Would there be?
3,000, 3,600 bucks a year.
I think he said 3,000 is what Mr. Barnes said, correct?
3,000?
I'm sorry.
Was it, was it, is it three?
Uh, it's $300 a month, $3,600 a year.
Would, would there be a possibility of taking on some of the other areas, whether it's the trail or something else that we are presently, I understand the deal about the outline things that we, the blue ribbon thing that we have to do, but what about some of the things that are not under that particular requirement? Could, could that be taken on and, and free up some dollars to put toward this? If that frees up $3,000, I mean, it's $3,000.
Well, I think our main problem there is manpower. We have three employees that basically mow, weed, edge and blow, and that's all locations within the city. And it would be difficult without more manpower to be able to take on that responsibility. I think, yes, we could take on the fire, fire station, we used to do it. But beyond that, it, it gets to be a burden for, for the guys. They're, they don't take the breaks during the day at all. They're working basically from 7:30 to about 3:15 when they come in at the end of the day. And they have about 15 minutes to take care of the mowers and the equipment after that.
All right. So what's the pleasure of the council? Part of the committee, should I say?
How does this affect the budget then, specifically?
It'll, we'll have to take from reserves, was it 24,000?
No, 20,000.
200, well, 2,000.
20,000, $707, including that $500 for, for this year.
Well, is the five?
What about the 5,000 in repairs and maintenance?
Well, that, that 27,000 that, that we would have to repair, we won't do that. And what will happen is these, these.
You're taking all 20,000 from reserves, so what, what about the repairs and maintenance budget? You're leaving that open or?
They have other equipment that is elderly. You know, they've talked about the two 3,000 mowers, but there are a couple of other mowers that are.
Well, and, I mean, should we, I mean, maybe we should consider, maybe, maybe we need to talk to this landscaping company about doing other properties.
We can do that.
Ms. Councilwoman Haskins, if you're proposing, if I'm understanding correctly, that you're are looking at the purchasing of the, the Toro mower and repairing the existing smaller mowers, if we were to do a five-year plan for that single mower finance plan, it's So it's only 5,000 difference annually to go ahead and purchase those other two mowers instead of repairing them at that, whatever the cost is here, at the 8,000 and change.
Right.
Right. Just want to provide you that information of what it would cost for the single mower if you wish to do the finance plan. Or if you want to buy it outright, it's $70,000, $5,000 and $35.98 for the large 4,100 mower.
Were you recommending, I'll say some of that, we've got to take it out of the repair money, this budget?
That's what I was asking, is what, where is the, if we buy them and do the financing option, where's the money?
It'll, it'll have to come from, from reserves or, you know, on this, we did not look to see if there was other places we could take. Obviously, we try to, when I do the budget amendments, I, I try to go in and, and keep them as low as I possibly can so that we're not impacting budget as much. So if there's a place that I can see that I can take it, it's just not being quite halfway through the year. You hate to take their 100% of their repairs budget and then in, you know, three months, I'm coming in going, well, they, they really needed it. So. Well, and that was the other thing we were going to say, with these vehicles, we will not repair them. What will happen is we will put them up for auction.
Yes.
Do you, sir?
Mm-hmm. So that will help offset to some degree. I don't, I, I don't have a whole lot of hope that there's going to be a lot of money going this way, but maybe supply the gas for the season.
I fear they'll go for scrap metal price.
They need your classics, though.
See, there you go. There you go.
Mr. Chair, if I might entertain a motion?
Yes, sir.
I, I would make the motion to purchase the three mowers as presented, the two Skags and the Toro, through the Governmental Capital Co-op Program for the annual amount of 20,00207.33 plus the $500 initiation contract fee.
Which is made by Mr. Nix. Do I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
Is it a second, Brandon?
Yes, for a second.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign opposed. Motion passes. That ends the committee.
Thanks, sir. I just have one good piece of those, all the city council members have this. Jimmy's report today was that there were how many new positive cases of COVID, Steve Ball?
Zero.
Zero and only one hospitalization. Our numbers are, we are affecting the curve. I appreciate everybody's participation in that. Here, there's no other genuine items, so we will stand adjourned from this committee. Committee meetings at 6:49. Thank you very much.